Yes, we're good.
Okay, alright. Good evening, everyone. We need a motion to... First, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, but Dr. McHune and Mr. Early are excused. And there are no changes to the agenda.
So we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second, motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And our presentations, our Capitol Project update. Just gonna lead us on that.
We'll turn it over to Michelle Miller from Turner. And Mr. Miller, no relation, will share the screen capability. So Michelle can start the presentation.
I think you're good to go, Michelle.
Okay, can you guys see my monitor?
We can't see your screen yet.
Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, tonight you have myself, Max joined us, Sakura, as well as Jim Templeton. Julian was unable to make it. So Jim and I will be presenting tonight. So we've changed up our cover photo here in our introduction, courtesy of Levi. These photos were drone photos taken by the district early last week. So first, we're gonna go through Phase 1 update. So Phase 1, items that are under completion this summer, although the work's not as heavy as last summer, like the steam addition and the Senate office addition we had last summer. This summer, our main piece that we're... The contractors are working on is the high school main parking lot. We're showing a completion date here of 8:31. With an early start, that completion date will be improved upon. They will give us an updated schedule and a new completion date. They are starting work June 1st and Louis of June 29th. You'll see the high school parking lot get underway next week. They're actually already started. You'll see the new sidewalks and curbing that was started back in April. And they continued on to early May. Had some early progress on that piece. In addition to that, there's change work being performed at the secured high school vestibule. So right now, when you come into that main vestibule there, you turn right, and there will be a new secured vestibule similar to Seneca once you go through that door. It may look like right now that the area is sitting a little stagnant. They are waiting for some delivery of materials as, you know, the machine was released about two months ago. So we have some mechanical materials that are on order still, but they have started to work on the progress of that space. Corrective actions, punch list items. Since the last meeting, we have added about 40 items or 658 corrective action observations and punch list items. Total remaining open is 37. There's an uptick there because we had a couple punch lists placed at the multipurpose. The district walked through the architect and also the kitchen consultant walked through about two weeks ago and had a list of items. The contractors will progress on that punch list over the month of June here. The main parking lot work, you know, we have listed for June activities. That'll be June and July. And then interior door modifications. There are some doors that are not of handicap accessible with, that the frames are being switched out. I believe there's five total doors. They started working on those today. Any questions for Phase 1 at the high school or Seneca? Please do in Prospect Elementary. And then we have Jim go through schedule here and give an update. And we will actually... Sorry, photo. I know you guys have seen the steam addition on Phase 1. This is actually the completion of the snow guard system. If you remember, the item falling noise issue we had. And there was a change issued to the contractor to add this snow guard system to stop that. We also finished... The contractor finished the gutter on the steam addition. Was waiting for those to be installed. So that was actually what was in that photo over at the back of the steam addition. But then I'll hand it over to Jim to speak to Phase 2 of the project.
Okay, hi, everyone. Phase 2 Prospect. As you can see with the photos on the right-hand side, we've got some exciting construction happening right now. Milestone dates at the top of the list. Right now, we're heavy into the kitchen and serving area renovations, both in the addition area and the renovation space. And everything for the project as a whole is still tracking for August, end of August completion date, substantial completion. The corrective action and punch list items for this month, they really haven't ticked up that much with the nature of the work that we're doing. We usually don't see many of those items populate in the demolition type stage that we're in. So right now, with June, in the library space, if anyone's been over there, that... The majority of that space that doesn't have to do with structural modifications is progressing really well. The drywall finish will be completing this this week with paint happening on Monday. And then ceiling grid and MEPs and all that will follow that work within the month of June. In the kitchen and serving area, the demolition will be wrapping up this week. There's some tile mud set that they're removing right now. And then at the end of the week, they'll be taking down the brick wall between the addition area and the renovation area to make that all one space. After that happens, then in that space, all the wall framing and MEP rough-in can begin. So some other activities that are going on with the school being out and advancing, you know, schedule where we can. You'll see this large rooftop unit. It's the middle picture on the right-hand side. That in conjunction with the photo at the bottom of the screen, which is the chiller, those two pieces of equipment work in unison to provide chilled water for all the new cooling equipment. So it's exciting to see that onsite and ready to get put into place. So the mechanical contractor is just working on getting structural steel in place for those units and roof openings prepped. And then, you know, later in likely July, when some of the larger rooftop units for the gym show up, those units will all go into place. But they have been able to set some of the smaller rooftop units that we wouldn't have been able to until the end of the school year. And then just items of note at the bottom, the kitchen renovation area has been a little bit of a struggle with unforeseens. You know, we've gone over a lot of the abatement that has been found that was unforeseen. And then also some of this mud set demo that we're getting into, just the condition that it was in more so than what it actually is. So right now, we have a current projected finish of September 4th of 2020.
So to prove upon that finish date, because the start of school we are well aware of is September 1st. When it makes sense, we are contacting the district to get overtime... Or sorry, the premium portion of overtime authorized for contractors to work, you know, longer shifts or Saturdays where that makes sense. And we've been able to work the last two Saturdays with the demolition contractor to progress some of those additional items, specifically the abatement and the unforeseen loose mud set that was underneath the kitchen quarry tile. Are there any questions on Phase 2?
I have one, but I think it's more of a Karen question. I was just curious to know what happened with our contract for the portable kitchen.
We had to bid up through May. And they took it back early. But if we're ever contracting, they weren't able to run it out again. It was here. We just sent it back. We wouldn't have been able to get it back in time to meet the kids. And we got back in session. So fortunately, we didn't have to spend that money for those couple months.
Okay. Everybody hear that?
Michelle, did you hear that?
The kitchen was... Sorry, she was hard to hear, but the kitchen was sent back, but you did have to spend the money today for the modular kitchen for the months we thought that there would be school.
Okay. COVID expense.
What is our microphone?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear Carrie, but Karen was a little distant. So I don't know if it's different positioning in the room.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Any other questions? Okay.
So Phase 3.1, this is the Seneca parking lot back near the new Seneca office in the high school re-roof area. Re-roof is being replaced over the two high school wings. And there's a small section that runs across the front of the building above the offices for the high school. So milestones for concrete curb and sidewalks. Next week, we need to say Monday that the curb and sidewalk will start and finish by the end of the week. Asphalt and striping the week of 6/19. And then substantial work, sorry, and 7/3. I know there's a lot of questions surrounding the finish of that parking lot. The district was hoping to do it a little bit earlier. We did speak to the contractor, and you know, they said on 7/3, they would be able to turn that parking lot over. The only real constraint is they want to make sure nobody drives on the asphalt for 10 days after it's placed. On the roofing project, we have a substantial complete of 9/18 here. All the roofing replacement itself is scheduled to be completed in August with some of the metal trim work going into September. That contractor is scheduled to start on a week from... Sorry, yesterday, this coming Monday. And they're upcoming Thursday to do a site walk and go by logistics. So they are getting started about 29 days or 29 calendar days, I should say, early. Four weeks early, their new schedule anticipates... We anticipate an end of August completion. Not going into September with the picked up month. Oh, did not mean to have that happen. Corrective action punch list items to date. We've actually had a few more since we have this on here, but total corrective action was one, and this is in the parking lot. Then total quality conforming, we've had three. And there's no open ones currently. So June work activities. In the month of June, I did go over the concrete, the sub base, and the paving. But the roofing area, they'll specifically start on the front of the building along the bus loop. And after that, they'll progress down the east wing, which is the staging yard side of the building. Are there any questions on Phase 3.1 before I leave it?
Michelle, it's Bob. Can you just clarify the Seneca parking lot? Work will be done on the 3rd?
Yep.
We will not be able to drive on it until the 13th?
Nope. As long as, sorry, 10 days prior to the 3rd, so the parking lot sits there for 10 days. They're worried about, you know, cranking the wheels. We'll usually put marks on the parking lot. That that is done, and then the following week should be able to park on the 3rd. So if they're paving the 19th, 10 days after that would be the 29th. Sorry, that's a little bit unclear there.
Nope, nope, nope. Just wanted to clarify, Sue.
Yep, so hoping originally we'd...
On July 3rd. Okay, good. Thank you.
Phase 3.2, Bets Park. This is actually very fast-changing here. Some of the pictures we have here, real quick, I'll go over. On the right there, you can see your existing building. They completed the demolition early this morning in that building, and we started underground plumbing. And then you're actually looking down towards the back of the park or towards front. They were actually, this was early last week, installing Storm. The Storm is complete in this area of the park. And they actually have poured foundations, and they were forming the walls on building B, we call it, which is your new concession and team room as of this morning. I expect to pour those foundation walls next Monday. Significant milestones coming up in the next month are the underground site utilities completing by July 2nd. So over the month of July, sorry, June, they'll be working through site electric and site water, or sorry, water and sanitary. Again, I apologize there. Corrective action punch list items, we are coming out. There's a few more here than there was when we produced this last week. We're coming out of that demolition phase where we wouldn't have had too many quality of correction act action items. Still start to see this tick off over the next couple meetings as we put work in place. June work activities, building A, which is your existing building, is the underground utility and slab replacements. The slab replacements in the areas where we're breaking up the slab to install the new sanitary and water. Building B, foundations and underground MEPs as well as slab upgrade will progress throughout June. Site work, again, will continue those underground utilities. And then we'll also this month, the contractor will install scoreboard and light foundations as well as a perimeter curb for the turf. Any questions on Bets Park? Any of the activities taking place, schedule?
So you guys picked out all the turf color?
We have turf... Great question. We have turf samples behind us for the board to review. I would just suggest that as the... Today or in the next few days, to take a look at those turf samples outside in natural sunlight, so that you can have a better natural freedom of the colors in the turf. Obviously, it doesn't have the turf infill, but we have a section of the padding for the multipurpose field in there and some suggestions of the main color schemes for the field, the ball field, the end zones, the out-of-bounds lines, the soccer lines, and a little...
And just a reminder that Bob, Rick was looking... Rick is from A-Turf. He's the prime contractor doing turf installation for decisions by the end of May to be able to keep that material on time. So let us know.
Yeah. Get one, two. Hopefully, get conclusion this week.
I couldn't hear it here now.
We'll get it to Rick this week.
Okay, if there's any additional questions, let us know, and we'll get them over to him. Okay? That's all we have for the Capitol Project presentation. And any other additional questions?
Yeah. First slide, Michelle.
Let me try, let me try.
Michelle, slide.
Bob, it's really hard to hear you. I heard Michelle's slide. That's about it.
Michelle, can you go to slide 1?
Just give me one second.
Explain what those drainage structures are. Yeah, looks a little... There. Is that gonna be right? Surface?
What's that?
That under a playing surface.
Correct, it is. You can actually see the... There's some here, here. I hope you guys can see my mouse moving. I believe there's another set definitely that gets installed here. And then I think there's another set here without looking at the drawing. Those are underground storage chambers. So they, the water infiltrates into them and filters back out. Those are under the playing field. You, if you drove by on Broad Street for a while, you could see there were big U-shaped, yellow, plastic, I don't know, pipe it might look like or half-pipe that was stacked in front of the fence there. And that was those chambers.
So where is that first one gonna be located? Is that in the outfield of the baseball field?
Yeah, so if you... I'm trying to think, because I was just over there chanting, it all staked. Your home plate is actually back. So there's these trees here that remain. Your press box about there, and your home plate's in here. See, that's in the outfield.
And then the upper one where your pointer is?
There was... I'd have to pull up the drawing to tell you where that is, but the other playing field is in here.
Okay. Surface, does that have any whatsoever on the playing surface?
What's that?
Is that... Michelle, does that give an impact on the playing surface?
And Michelle, do you have a better microphone for us?
I don't know. Talking right a couple feet from, or not even a couple feet, maybe 12 inches from my laptop. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you perfectly.
Okay. Oh, better microphone for yourself at the meeting, were you saying? This, you'd have to punt, would have to speak to the design aspects of the field?
Okay, we can talk with Jeff and Luke and have them report out next week's meeting if there's specific...
Yep, I can give you, what we can give you is I can look up afterwards and tell you what the cut section is and the depth, you know, the actual amount of fill that goes over this and turf. I can tell you how deep the top of those are under and what the coverage is.
Yeah, commonly, this is Matt. Commonly, those are placed under the playing surface because real estate is so pristine. And that's done to save space, but it's also designed to carry traffic and load above it. And Hunt can report out what those weights are and what that field will be able to support, but it will not have any effect on how the game is played or how the field plays.
Okay. Is there any type of warranty for settling?
You have a special inspections contractor who is under direct contract with Salamanca Central Schools. And they are taking the necessary bearing pressures and compaction inspections by the required lifts that are in the specification. All that information is reported out in their inspection reports. So we will track and monitor any deficiencies and make sure they're corrected. That is the guarantee that you have that it's done properly. It's a third-party inspection direct to Salamanca.
Okay, what's the length of the warranty?
For the turf itself is, I believe it's 12 years here, Michelle? It's longer than the eight, right?
Yeah, off the top of my head, it's 12 years here.
I mean specifically for any kind of settling that might occur. What's our recourse if it happens in a couple of years?
So Carrie, you bring up a valid point, which has happened on a couple different projects across Western New York. To answer your question first, the warranty on the settling, that falls under the contractor's one-year warranty. So it's important that those inspections are managed properly. They're documented. Our team just had a conference call earlier today specifically regarding the process of inspections, where they're stored, how they're handled, who gets them to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on as it's being built.
So who's gonna oversee that on our...
Matt and Michelle, who is the point person in the district that does that? Is that Rich Pankowski? Or is that still Turner because you'll still be onsite?
Correct, we manage it for the district, but the district is copied on those reports. I'll double-check on Rich. Bob, I know you're copied on the Terracotta ones, so you love getting that come through your email. But so you're copied. I can make sure Rich is copied on those reports. The deficiencies, we do log those into Procore as one of our observations. Does they come up?
Okay, thank you.
That's done to make sure they get corrected before the contractor moves on.
What happens in four years, we settle it. We're on the book for it. It's at our expectancy. I mean, I understand why we have drainage structures. But I just had no idea they're actually gonna be directly under a playing surface, which concerns me a little.
I think you'd wanna get in a conversation with Hunt on that.
Settling can hit.
Well, at our next owners' meeting, we'll talk to the architects about that concern and get a better answer. And if we're gonna have them here next week, if there's questions, then we can get an answer for next week.
Okay.
So are there other options of getting the drainage moved?
None of this. You're talking tens of thousands of dollars if you want.
That's kind of what I...
Give you a... If I could just weigh in, just your neighbor up the road, you asked for options, Teresa. The other option is people cut in a detainage pond like you see at the new Lowe's or any new construction area where they manage to stormwater runoff on a school district because it's so valuable, the flat playing surface. Cataragus didn't want to take it up as a, they called it the swamp. So they actually put theirs beneath the grass baseball field that they have there out behind the school. Carrie brings up a good point about the settling. It is not that out of the realm that that may happen. And I know for some, it, the carpet is picked up. It's re-graded, and the carpet is reinstalled. And at the districts that that happened to, that was done under the warranty condition because the turf manufacturer has to accept the substrate before he's allowed to put the turf down.
So you're saying that the subgrade falls under that 12-year manufacturer warranty?
The carpet only does.
The carpet.
Well, explain what you just said again.
So on the districts that had settlement, the one specifically was a conduit that was cut in after the bulk backfill was done across the field for a comb box that the owner wanted to add. And there was settling in the line of the trench. And so that carpet was pulled up. That grade was adjusted and filled, and the carpet was put back down. The carpet was removed and put in by the turf manufacturer. So there's no issues with tearing or, you know, it's just not a site contractor going out there to cut it open and make the fix. All the relevant parties are brought back to correct their proportions of the work or perform the corrections at the cost of the contractor who had a deficiency.
But you stated that the contractor only has a one-year warranty on this. So what happens if it happens 367 days after the install, after the acceptance?
I'd ask you to consult your attorney.
Thank you. That was the answer I was looking for.
The bond carries the warranty period, but this particular scope of work is excavation and backfill. That would be deficient. And I don't know that to have a longer than a one-year warranty on their work.
Okay, I'm fine. Just means we're on the hook for it after a year. That's all.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Michelle, Jim, and Matt. Appreciate it.
Bob, do I need to turn anything back over? Rob, do I need to turn anything back over to you or can I just leave?
You can leave.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can go to central office message.
Yes, uh really just a continued thank you to our staff, teachers, staff across the board for the great jobs they're doing on a daily basis.
Karen? Karen has nothing. Got nothing. All right, and we can go to board message. Sue, you want to start?
I have really nothing at this point.
Barb?
Okay, so um also thank everybody. Good job.
Likewise, I'll thank, thanks to all the staff. For all the hard work that helped us.
I I've been driving around to get flowers at various places and I see a lot of those.
Yeah, they do look nice.
Now I want to know who lives there though.
Go knock on the door.
Give it a six foot four.
Carrie?
Um yeah, I want to thank all of our teachers, administrators, staff, other board members, everybody for, you know, everything we've been doing this school year. Um not how we wanted to end. Disappointing on many levels, but there's always still hope for the future, you know? And right now, school's not over. We still got a couple of weeks to go. Um just wanted to encourage all the parents, the kids, you know, everybody, just try your best. Do your best for the next couple of weeks. Let's finish strong. Um again, thank everybody. Also, I just want to say that I know that all of our thoughts and, you know, well wishes are with the family of Cindy Moore. A long-time teacher here, very well-respected and loved community member. And the district did share a website link. Uh the family is asking for help. They're asking for prayers. Uh they're just looking for anything and everything anyone can do for them at this time. They're they're in not a very good situation, but just wanted to let everyone know that we are thinking of it.
Usually that's not my problem. I just want you to know that. Um I agree with what Carrie and the rest of the board members said. Thank you again to everybody that's um still teaching the classes and getting the education materials out to all the kids. And the meals and um just the support of the community and the staff, everyone for our kids, all of our kids. It's really heartfelt. I know I was speaking to a parent whose student goes to another district and they were saying how their district wasn't doing things that we are for our kids. So it's good to hear that we are stepping up and that we're going above and beyond. Uh makes me proud. I'm proud to be from Salamanca. Um I want to reiterate what Carrie said, that our thoughts and prayers are with Cindy Moore and her family. Um they lost Cindy's mom to COVID. Um and Cindy's mom was a very, she was, she was a former clerk at the nation. She was a judge. Um, you know, very respected elder, so it's a big loss for the Seneca Nation and the community because she was such a a great influence over everybody that whose lives she touched. Um and Cindy is still in the hospital along with Diane, her sister, and they're both on ventilators and they're they're both really fighting for their lives. So any prayers and thoughts that we can send their way is what what we're trying to do. Um and then the last thing is I was contacted by NISBA today and they asked me if I would um say a few words that for something that they're preparing for their seniors. So I thought, oh, that was really nice. So I get to be the voice for the Buffalo region. So I told Bob, I'm starting to become famous, so you know.
You've been famous.
More famous.
More famous.
Yeah, infamous. There you go, Dale. Okay, so I'll turn it over to Barb.
Okay, I have a number of items. I'll try to keep it brief. Um so by now, um I'm trusting and hoping that the community is aware that the last day for students and staff will be June 12th, with a dismissal of students by 10:00 AM. Um this uh is consistent with the traditional end of the school year timeframe. Uh not the last day, obviously, but the timeframe is consistent. Staff will be dismissed by the principals and supervisors on the 12th shortly thereafter. Details will be forthcoming from each building principal and it will be fairly consistent among each of the three buildings. Um our tech team and our principals are coordinating a material delivery. Our last delivery of instruction will occur by June 2nd. And then shortly after the June 12th, uh end of the school year, collection will begin in orchestrated waves of devices and materials and textbooks. Uh the items collected will be inventoried and as necessary updated by the IT staff and then returned to students who are requiring summer programming. The staff will keep their computers and devices and will have a separate collection schedule for the teachers so their devices can be updated over the summer. I want to thank the tech staff, the building principals for their monumental efforts. Uh this is not, as Carrie said, the way that we envisioned it, but we will, like warriors, make the best of it. Our summer sessions for students needing summer programming will not be in person. They will rather be remotely uh as required by the governor's order. Students that are requiring summer programming will still be able to receive their services remotely and will make sure that they're prioritized to get or keep their devices as accordingly necessary. Building principals, once again, are facilitating those needs and those lists, and we thank them for that. Um I see Mrs. Dudek is on the call. I want to thank Mrs. Dudek for helping to facilitate the mandated IEP programming options for students over the summer. Uh we thank her and our special education staff for continuing to provide services to our students at greatest risk. Um our summer staff development and professional development will continue. Uh it will look differently as we transition to remote PD services for staff. We're hoping and optimistic they will have some in-person professional development in accordance with the latest guidelines from the CDC and the governor and the county health department. This is still a work in progress, but we will still have a robust, ample, and aggressive professional development offerings for our staff and our employees. I want to thank Mrs. Beatty, who is our director of staff development, for coordinating this. Uh we anticipate thousands of hours of staff professional development over the summer, and we hope soon to have this be in person. Uh we do anticipate our 12-month staff, we've started to have conversations about our 12-month staff returning to more normalized hours in our reopening plan. A reopening plan will be congruent with the executive orders, health protocols, including social distancing, use of masks, temperature checks, and we will be getting this information out to our 12-month staff shortly to make sure that they're aware of our eventual transition back to regular summer hours for our 12-month staff. Uh as expressed, Teresa, we are working on our end-of-the-year graduation planning messaging. And Mr. Seabird, Dr. Beeler, Mr. Haley are working with our graduation team. Uh the next update on graduation will come from Mr. Seabird. I'm going to stay out of it and just show up and give my speech. And I think that's a a good recipe. The superintendent should not be there except to not announce the names. And this is a celebration for students, and this will be very student-centered. And we're looking forward to those plans coming up in the very near future. Um I would also like to echo the comments about Cindy Moore's families, her thoughts. Uh our thoughts and prayers are with her family as they deal with these struggles as well as everyone who's dealing with all of these complex, personal and emotional issues dealing with the virus or other struggles that folks may have as a result of this illness that is, has changed our landscape and our life. Um I I just would like to share a thought with Cindy. Just about on the last day she worked before she retired, she told me that she loved every minute of teaching and considered Salamanca her home and her family. And I think there's no truer word spoken by a warrior than Cindy's. And we're wishing her, her sister a speedy recovery and her entire family with her mom's passing are in our hopes, thoughts, and prayers during this very difficult time. Um significantly less, significant issue ballots are out for the budget and the referendums. Uh we would encourage all community members to return their ballots if you've not received one, which you have not heard of an individual not receiving a ballot, which is different than other school districts. Uh please let Janet know in the district clerk's office, 945-2400, extension 4025, and we will ensure that we get the appropriate absentee ballots to you. Um today I spoke with a number of community members. One in particular, she and I spoke for about 40 minutes about the budget, the propositions, and her concerns about the governor's plan for state aid cuts. I can tell you she was incredibly articulate, well-read, and obviously read our recent Powell edition cover to cover. And so I appreciate the phone call, and she shared with me some insights from her perspective as a community member. And that was greatly appreciated. Um later on this week or early next week, we plan on shooting and videoing our annual Powell budget presentation. It will look different. It'll probably be a lot shorter, probably not as funny as the kids would have made it. Uh and certainly a little bit rustier without the student support. Uh and we're looking to get that out to the community in the next few days. And lastly, I think lastly, um I did receive an inquiry from a member of the class of 1971. Just for the record, that was the year I graduated kindergarten. Um so they inquired about donating a bench for Betts Park for a member of the class of 1972, who recently passed away after an illness. Um I will reach out to them and as well as the chief architect, Luke, who's overseeing the environmental designs at Betts Park. And we will find a suitable bench. It would be my recommendation that we standardize this so that there's consistency of the benches, and we'll look at some options and then talk with the community member. And I think that it's a lovely gesture and we can certainly use places to sit along the walking path or in other strategic locations for a permanent bench to honor members of the community. And lastly, as I mentioned, the second last, I apologize, I do have turf samples behind me and we can take a look at those to the board members and talk about preferences. And I will end this. Lastly, on a personal note, I want to thank the board members, the staff, all of the administration for your kind words, cards, and support over the past couple of days as my family dealt with the death of my father-in-law suddenly and the hospitalization suddenly, as well as my mother-in-law. Not COVID-related, but tragedy hits all of us when we least expect it. And it's the friendship and camaraderie of close friends and colleagues that makes these difficult days more bearable. The kindness shown to my family is beyond words, and I thank you profusely from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Barb. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carried. In our new business, our property report card, property tax report card, we need a motion to approve the school property tax report card. Motion by Dale, second by Sue. Are there any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carried. And then we have our board information reports, our Capitol project summary, upcoming events. Oh, which is not a lot. This is lovely Board of Education meetings. And then we have a, we need a motion to go into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Again, if you're a community member, don't forget to turn in your ballots. So we need a motion to go into executive session for the first of contract negotiations.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second, second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carried.